Good afternoon and welcome to council briefing. We have one interview today for the SIRS board.
If you'd like me to call roll, call for it, sorry about that.
I'm ready to go to work. Call roll, Ms. Fister.
Council President Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Dillon.
Here.
Councilmember Klitsky.
Present.
Councilmember Navarrete.
Present.
Let the record reflect that Councilmember Zepone has just entered the chambers and Councilmember Bingle is absent.
Thank you. That was my silent treatment. Again, thank you. We have one interview today for the SIRS board and that's Bo Mattson. If you come on down, Bo, and thank you for coming today. Want to tell us a little bit about yourself?
Yeah. Well, thanks for having me here. My name is Bo Mattson. I am the Chief Investment Officer for Rise Properties Trust, which is a commercial real estate firm based out of Seattle. In 2020, when the pandemic struck, it was a pretty millennial move, but my wife is from here and she used that as an opportunity to bring me here to raise our family. So that was in 2020 and I have not looked back. I've been working to get involved with the community. I joined the CFA Society of Spokane as their treasurer. Have a one-year-old at home and looking to make Spokane my home, and so I wanted to apply to this position.
Well, first of all, shout out to your wife. So thank you, wife, for bringing him. You want to tell us why you're interested in the SIRS or what you think you can contribute to this?
Yep. So I have three immediate family members that are all on public pension plans and I've seen how employees of pension plans, they structure their lives around expecting a pension. They don't always know what goes into it. They don't know that there's risk in the pension. They just rely on it and they expect it to be there when they retire. And so it's just been, I've seen it firsthand. It's, I think, a really valuable and important part of the community and having expertise to manage it well, oversee it is, I think, of critical importance. And it's also where my passion lies with investing. I don't pick stocks, but I love thinking about asset allocation. I do it for my day job. I manage a fund of about 6,500 investors. I understand that there's a variety of stakeholders involved and you really need to listen to all the stakeholders and then make decisions in their best interest.
Any other Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, just wondering, obviously, these meetings kind of meet, you know, middle of the afternoon and those sorts of things. Any conflicts or inability to just make some of the general meetings for the SIRS board?
Nope. Fortunately, moving from Seattle and keeping that job, I get to work from home, so it should not be a problem at all, except for the May 1st meeting. But after that, the rest of the year, I'm clear.
Very good. And then just, I'm just curious, you said, you know, you moved to Spokane in 2020, haven't looked back. I guess what's most appealing to you about Spokane? What do you enjoy about this town?
Other than his wife being here.
Well, yes, of course, of course.
I definitely have the in-laws for the baby, which is really helpful and important and goes to show family and Spokane is really important. It's just, I find it a much more enjoyable pace of life. You can get anywhere in 20 minutes, my wife says, in Spokane. Sometimes it's 25. That's really nice. You can park wherever you want. There's lots of parks for our one-year-old. We go out there with our dog. It's just a very high quality of living and I can't fathom going back at this point.
Well, you said the magic words to me, "You listen to all," so thank you so much. You will be approved, voted on next Monday. Unless you have any questions for us, we look forward to you joining us.
I really appreciate you guys' time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Jones.
All right, we're going to move into the tonight's current agenda. We have no potential amendments until we get to the resolutions and final reading ordinances. The first resolution, 2024-0037, I am going to ask Spencer Gardner to come up. We do have a Zepone-proposed amendment, but I'm going to have Spencer come up here as well.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. Earlier, Councilmembers Zepone and I had had some conversations about adding commercial parking, parking minimums in commercial areas as an item in the work plan. We feel like that's already covered by the Centers and Corridors work that we're doing, but we felt that it would also be helpful to call that out specifically so that the public can see that that's a topic that we'll be covering. So that's the nature of the amendment from Councilmembers Zepone. We've also had some conversations with Councilmember Klitsky. I think our desire would be to take a little bit more time and finalize some of those conversations, so we're asking to defer a week so that we have some time to sit down, make sure that her concerns are addressed and that all the council has time to process those and think about them. So we would request a one-week deferral.
Yeah, so I move to defer for one week.
I'll second.
It's been moved to second for one-week deferral. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. No's. Abstention, that is deferred till the 29th, till the 29th.
Thank you.
Thank you, Spencer. Next is the resolution 2024-0038. We do have a proposed Cathcart amendment.
Yeah, thank you. So this may die for lack of a second. I don't have my seatmate here, but I do think that it's important that we consider affordability in the context of climate planning. I think that's really important. So I worked with Chris Wright, our policy director, to help put something together that would put some language in here directing us, directing staff to move kind of in a direction that puts a lens on affordability, not just housing, but obviously that's a pretty big one, but in general, so that we're not impacting, you know, any one demographic group of people in a negative way, certainly not more so than any other. And so I can, I can read through this, but for the moment, I will just make a motion to adopt the Cathcart amendment on 2024-0038.
The motion is here second on the floor.
Second.
It's been moved in second to adopt the amendment. All those in favor?
Wait, wait, discussion.
Oh, discussion, go ahead.
Yep.
I will speak against this. I think it really waters down the goal of what this is trying to do and I thought some of this language that was amended, just kind of didn't recognize the totality of concerns around climate change and thought it kind of watered it down.
Councilman Klitsky?
I think that the way that our comprehensive update is structured, those concerns are going to come at a later layer after the climate planning has already been done. The Commerce has a whole section on how we're going to deal with the income bands and there's an instructional video on how we're supposed to do it and all kinds of stuff, but most cities and counties are kind of behind on that work right now. So I think it's still developing and honestly, I haven't watched the videos yet. I just know they're there, so I'm not really ready to weigh in on this, so I apologize for that. But I think that we will have an opportunity when it comes up, so I'm not ready to vote on this.
Yes, Councilman Cathcart.
No, understood. And in full disclosure, I did speak with the mayor's policy advisor, Adam McDaniel, this morning about this a little bit and based on that conversation, I get the sense they're very sympathetic, but in a similar position as yourself, so.
Any other discussion? So it's been moved in seconded. All those in favor of adopting the amendment, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any no's?
No.
No abstentions? The motion fails.
All right, thank you. The next resolution is 2024-0040. We have a Navarrete-proposed amendment for this resolution.
So really, this amendment is just removing one member from the list of people who were going to be serving on that?
Yes.
So can I get a motion to adopt Councilmember Navarrete's amendment?
It's a move.
It's a move, is it second? Any discussion? And this is one member, Councilmember Cathcart?
Just clarity, this was somebody who requested to be removed.
Yes, they requested to be removed, yes. So it's been moved in second to adopt the amendment. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any no's? Abstentions? That is adopted, thank you.
All right. Next is the ordinance C36504. This is a Zepone-proposed amendment.
Yeah, this is the one that changes the name to the Tourism and Investment, Cultural Investment Grant.
What's the acronym?
No.
Taxi, the taxi grant.
Okay, all right, thank you.
T-A-C-I, is that right? Tacky? I was just thinking tacky.
Tacky, you call it taxi.
Is there a motion?
It's a move.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
I'm sorry, who seconded that?
Councilmember Dillon?
Yeah, second.
Okay.
So moved by Zepone, second by Dillon. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any no's? Abstentions?
All right. And lastly, we have an ordinance C36515. This has a proposed Wilkerson-Dillon proposed amendment.
Want to take with Councilmember Dillon?
Yeah. We brought forth this amendment after looking at what other, what some other municipalities have done that have passed similar measures to the rental notification increase, so having a staggering of 120 days for any increase that is 3% or lower.
Or higher.
Or higher, sorry. Yeah.
There's a motion, Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, and this is on the Wilkerson-Dillon amendment, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So I guess what I would say is, I oppose it based on the fact that I think, I mean, just inflation alone is probably going to push you over 3% and, and so I think that there, it just doesn't really change that incentive for somebody to, on a, on a six-month notice, suggest that they're going to increase rent a pretty significant amount and then they can always back it up, I guess, as they get closer, but they'll have no choice but to assume that they would need an increase above 3%, just, just based on inflation alone. And that doesn't account for the maintenance costs and, and changes there. So, so I'm going to oppose it for that reason. I don't think it changes the incentive structure, which kind of encourages, to a certain extent, landlords to increase rents even higher.
I will speak to it on a personal level and I shared this with some others. I have an employee who came to me and had got a notice of rent increase with 60 days, already working one job and a half, and there was just no way she could absorb that cost in two months without doing something different. So not only absorbing the cost, but not having the money to look for another place to live within 60 days is just as much as a challenge itself along with the rental increase. I know that it is difficult for landlords, especially small ones, but it's just as difficult for our service economy as well. Somebody say, well, 3%? Well, if you're in social security fixed income and you get $846 a month and somehow your rent goes up 3%, that is a significant amount of money. So it is all relative. We have to look at the totals, in my opinion, we have to look at the total scope of how this really impacts people. And 120 days can be difficult, but it will really help our service economy and workers. The people who are working is the ones who need this additional help, so I'll be in support of it. Any more commentary? I need a second. I didn't get a second on that.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Did you have a comment, Councilmember Zepone? So it has been moved in second to adopt the amendment. All those in favor, please. I'm sorry.
I apologize, but I thought Dillon, Councilmember Dillon made the motion.
I'll second it then.
Okay, thank you.
Again, any more council commentary? All those in favor of the amendment, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. No?
No.
Any abstentions? That amendment passes. Thank you.
All right, so before we move to the advanced agenda for the 29th, I believe there was maybe interest of taking one of the consent items for next week and potentially suspending the rules to add to tonight's agenda. So that would be item 15 on next week's agenda for the loan agreement with the Haifumi.
That is correct, thank you.
I move to suspend the rules.
Yes, I was, the motion?
For the purposes of adding to the agenda, the Haifumi.
Can I get a second?
Second.
So motion to suspend the rules. All those in favor of suspending rules, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any no's? Abstentions? Now, the amendment to add the?
I move to add that item to the agenda.
Number 15?
Yep. Number 15 to the agenda for tonight, for next week's agenda. A week earlier. Does that work for you? Okay.
Can I get a second on that?
Second.
It's been moved in second to add number 15 to the agenda for the 29th. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any no's? Abstentions? That is added. Thank you, councilmember.
All right. Now, before you move on from that one, I wanted to talk about C36516, the emergency ordinance, ordinance regarding emergency ordinances. Councilmember Cathcart, I know you sent me a list of those with a cursory look. Having looked over that today, I noticed that you voted in support of the vast majority of those, but from your analysis, a lot of those would no longer be allowed. Is that correct?
As an emergency.
As an emergency.
Right.
So some of those?
Would they be allowed? That's sort of up to legal and Chris's side, but whether or not they meet, in my mind, the standard laid out, that's where I said no.
So some of those I had concerns with, a lot of it regulating renter protections during COVID, some of these allowing and putting on a proposition for the EMS levy by the election date deadline. I remember we did that in '22 because it was brought to us at the deadline. We would have missed that window and we would have lost the funding for that.
Well, that may be the nuance that I was laying out there that didn't catch.
And some others, regulations on homelessness and protections for homeless people during the weather impacts, a policy framework for homeless.
We have to go back and look. We were making those decisions in September, well after the heat of the summer. So is it an emergency at that point or was it an emergency and we declined to take action when it was an emergency?
So I just have concerns, I guess, about that ordinance. I don't know if other people had concerns about that ordinance.
Well, I'll just speak. I know that in our council retreat, we had a discussion led by Mr. Wright on really, what's an emergency, the scope, that the way the language is written. He has done analysis on the ones that have gone forward. My concern is we get so narrow in our scope that we may be constraining ourselves or the administration as to what an emergency is. The language as it's written is adequate going forward. And again, for the emergency, it takes five votes. If we don't fill us an emergency, it's council, then we need to vote it down. But the language as it is, is adequate, in my opinion. Councilmembers, are you just having a narrative on this?
No, I'll make a motion to defer it indefinitely.
I'll second.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Navarrete.
Second.
Councilmember Navarrete, second that. Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, I guess I would just say, why not just vote it down if, why the indefinite deferral? That's my only question.
I just don't think it needs to be brought up for legislative if it's lacking support and I don't think, I have not been convinced of this, a strong case for this. And I think it would have unintended impacts. Looking over the list that you provided, most of those, you supported the emergency vote at that time that would not be limited.
Well, look, if I voted no every single time I wanted to vote no, I mean, come on, right? There's something in every ordinance that's crap, let's be honest. So I could find a reason to vote no on just about every ordinance, if that's the issue here. And using an emergency clause as an escape route to vote no on everything is probably not the best way to make policy.
So I would echo Councilmember Cathcart. At this point, I would just rather us go ahead and take the vote and vote it down if we're not in support of it. If it comes back, then it comes back in some other shape or form, but deferring it at this time, I don't see the benefit. Councilmember Klitsky?
I think I agree with that, but I also think that the new language is just going to require us to make a similar judgment call. I'm really struggling with, I think that sometimes good government really has to be like cooperation and people bringing us information in a timely manner. And I feel like a lot of the emergency ordinances that the folks who are on council were faced with was a lot of being brought things way too late and things should have been discussed much sooner. And I would love to see us do a better job of that. I don't know if there's a way to legislate that, enforce that. We just have to do a better job. So if there is, I think we should still have the options of someday, like looking at other language. I'm not sure that this would do that because I feel like I would look at that language and look at the language we already have and still feel the same dilemma. But I understand why you want to do this. I mean, I do too. I would like to see us not always in emergency mode, but I'm, I'm just not sure if this is the solution.
Council President? Yeah, the last comment I would just make is, is sort of the reason behind it, I think, isn't just for our, our benefit, you know, whether or not it's an emergency or not. It doesn't really affect us that much, except you need one more vote. But it's, it's the public that I want to make sure that we're considering safeguards for because effectively, when you pass something as an emergency, you strip the public of their right to referendum. Obviously, the mayor can't veto or not, she can't practically veto, but the public, to me, is the, is my bigger concern. And a lot of land use in particular, you can't run an initiative on at all. The courts have said that is not an area that's right for a, a public initiative. So that referendum could be the only recourse the public will ever have, short of throwing out four or five of the council members, I suppose. But not this, no, no one citizen has a vote on more than three council members. So that's not necessarily possible either. So we need a protection, I think, for the public and that's, that is my biggest thrust on this, is making sure their right to referendum is not infringed upon. And I believe that there have been times where that's probably been the case because we do not want them organizing and, and putting something on a ballot to repeal an action of this council or, or other governments have faced similar situations.
Councilmember Zepone?
Yeah, I was just wondering from this list that was circulated, do you remember any, where the intent was to prevent a referendum?
I wouldn't say the intent, but certainly the unintended consequence is, or the consequence, whether intended or unintended, is that there is no referendum. You know, and whether that's Boca, whether that's parking, whether that, you know, it doesn't matter. It's, it's, you know, the folks should have the ability, they've got 30 days, they can go collect signatures, it's a tall order. It has happened on a recall before with a mayor, so obviously, we know that it can sort of happen, but, but we need to make sure that that is preserved where it's, it's not an actual clear-cut emergency.
I'll just comment again, I don't know what the language would be different six months from now to where we're at. If it is not supported and voted down, it still can be brought back in some other reiteration or new language that would be amenable to council members in collaboration with administration, so.
There's still a motion. There's still a motion to defer indefinitely.
So the motion to defer, do we, and it's Councilmember Navarrete, did you second that? Motion to defer, all those in favor of deferral, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
No? No.
Nay.
Motion fails. Mr. Jones?
All right. So now moving on to the 29th agenda, starting with the consent items. Number one, this will be briefed by Rick Giddings.
Good afternoon. This item one is pre-purchase approval for just about all of the Public Works 2024 vehicle purchases. This represents 34 vehicles total for an amount not to exceed $7,409,000, including tax of that. Solid Waste Collections is getting four units for 2.3 million. Street Department will be getting 10 for 1.91 million. The Water Department, seven units for 749,000. Wastewater Treatment, four units for 770,000. Wastewater Maintenance, six units for 1.56 million. And Engineering, two units for 120,000. All of these will be meeting the, the clean fuel requirements and replacing vehicles that have exceeded their economic life.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, you said a number of things, but one that jumped out at me was 10 vehicles for 1.9 million? What are we ordering that's costing almost $200,000 a vehicle?
There's a lot, so let me grab my list here.
I thought you said that was for streets. So is that, is the dump trucks? I mean, is that what we're talking about?
That's part of it. So we have, Street Department is getting, let's see, a bucket, a big bucket truck, two flusher trucks. Flusher trucks are probably 300,000 each, several plows, dump trucks, some, some expensive equipment.
And then those vehicles, are those in particular meeting the clean fuel standards?
Yeah, and in this case, clean fuel standard means the renewable diesel that we're using, so.
Okay, so it's not necessarily that they're electric, it's that they're using the renewable diesel?
Of this list, there's really only two electric vehicles that meet, there may be more deeper in the list there, but there's only, there's an electric forklift in there and there's two electric lightnings, five electric lightnings, which, which meet the standard, which already have charging installed. So the rest of these will be diesel, renewable diesel vehicles or renewable natural gas vehicles.
But they're mostly specialty, so that, that's helpful. Okay.
Any other questions?
All right, thank you, Rick.
Thanks.
Items two and three will be briefed by David Payne, who is online today. David, you're muted, if you want to unmute.
There we go. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
The first item is for the purchase of steam traps used throughout the facility. Steam traps remove condensate or water from the steam system, thereby safeguarding other components within the, within the, within the power plant. It's purchased from Industrial Service Solutions in Seattle, Washington for $60,482,050, including tax and shipping. The second item is the fourth and final renewal for a sole-source contract with Siemens Energy from Seattle, Washington. They are the sole-source provider for our turbine generator services. This contract runs from May 1st, 2024 to April 30th, 2025, with an estimated cost not to exceed 350,000. exceed $350,000 plus tax. Any questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you, David. Items four through eight, all of these items will be briefed by Clint Harris.
Good afternoon, Council President and Council. Street Department is requesting permission to purchase or to create a contract to purchase liquid de-icer from GMCO Corporation, not to exceed $1,500,000. All right, item number five, the Street Department seeking approval to purchase salt called Ice Kicker at a cost not to exceed $115,000 from salt distributors. And then item number six, the department is seeking approval to purchase a magnesium-infused road salt at a cost not to exceed $100,000. And that would be purchased from Custom Salt Solutions. And then item number seven, 7A is a state contract. And so one of the problems we've had in past years is the state contracts are, the state, during years of short supply, can call all the materials due for their own entities. And so it's created some uncomfortable situations for us. And so that's the purpose of the other separate contracts. So this is the state contract, and this is with the salt distributors and Custom Salt Solutions for purchase of road salt at a cost not to exceed $140,000.
So can I ask, obviously, there are different streets that uses the different types of salt de-icing. Is that the issue?
No, the, it's different types of weather.
Different types of weather?
Yeah. Some, some weather is colder, and so it challenges us to use more liquid material, or, I'm sorry, colder is more salt and the solid materials, and then the colder or the warmer is for the magnesium and the liquid materials.
Thank you.
The other part of the state contract is 8B, and that is to purchase, I'm sorry, 7B, and that's to purchase road salt at a cost not to exceed $140,000. And that would be with salt distributors or custom salt solutions. And then item number eight, the Street Department seeking approval to renew the contract with TransMap that was presented last week at committee for cost not to exceed $144,295,70.
All right, questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Clint. Items nine through 12, all these items will be briefed by Dan Bowler.
Good afternoon. Item nine is proposed contract amendment with LSB Consulting Engineers, a structural engineering firm of Spokane to increase their on-call contract from the current 500,000 to a million. Funds expended into this contract are reimbursed by the Public Works project, for which we need structural engineering services. Engineering Services is the primary user of this contract, but other departments can and do make use of our on-call contracts. Item 10 is proposed agreement with Parametrics, Parametrics of Spokane for design of the Fishlike Trail Phase One for $353,000 plus 10% administrative reserve. First phase of this project is slated for construction in 2025, and last week at Pies, INGA gave a fairly detailed briefing of both phases of the project, which I won't repeat. And item 11 is the proposed supplemental agreement with KPFF Consulting Engineers for construction administration assistance on the Washington Stevens Bridge Deck Rehab, which is slated to start in about May 20th, I believe. We're requesting 111,000 be added to their design budget for the construction administration. This is something the engineering services usually performs, but on the specialized project like a bridge project, we need outside assistance. And finally, item 12 is blank agenda for the 2024 Local Access Trip SEAL Project. Open bids a couple hours ago, reviewing those bids now. Current low bidder is Shamrock Paving for 1.188 million, which is about 1% off of the engineer's estimate, but that's tentative pending a review of the paperwork. No other bids were received and will forward a final recommendation to you in the next day or so.
All right, thank you, Dan. Item 13, this item will be briefed by Lauren Searle.
Good afternoon, Council. This, this item is a agreement with the Rockwood Neighborhood Council for the maintenance of a piece of property at 12th and Rockwood, labeled as Olmstead Triangle Park. This is an area that was actually founded back in 1906. Since that time, the Rockwood neighborhood has been involved in some way of helping to maintain that park. This agreement is to formalize that. Place it on the, on the neighborhood council, the ability to maintain all of the plantings that are inside the flower beds. And the city is still maintaining the, the water providing and the trees and all the grass that's outside of those planter beds.
So what has been the partnership previously, unofficially? How has it worked?
Unofficially, the neighborhood council has gone out and they've maintained the flower beds. They have pulled the weeds, they've put new plants in them. However, they have not been on any kind of legal agreement waivers for them being out there, their safety and protecting the city and the council off that.
I, my, my initial thought is, hey, great, I'm glad to have the neighborhood council doing this work. But then my second thought is, does it, does it start to set some sort of precedence for other parts of our community that says, well, the city isn't going to maintain this, so you're going to have to do it yourself, even though it's city-owned property? And I, I just worry a little bit about future iterations of this, and are we going to start telling folks, well, sorry, that, that strip, it's city-owned, but you need to take care of it?
It is not an unusual agreement. We just had one up at the Shadle, Shadle Park High School, a little triangle piece that's on the other side of the road from them, where they wanted a community garden. We have little pieces like this where we offer the, the neighborhood that doesn't, doesn't picture the condition of that area the same as we have it. They want something a little bit different, and we offer them the ability to come in and add, add their little flavor to it for the council.
So, sorry, just one more. So to follow up, this piece, the triangle on the South Hill, are they doing a garden or is it just landscaping that they're making, they're taking care of?
It is just landscaping.
So I guess that, to me, would be a little bit of a difference, is one is, it's a garden that's meant to be sort of neighborhood-supported and engaged. This is just city-owned property beautification. So I guess that's how I'm looking at it differently.
Yes, understood.
Councilmember Kuzsky.
Oh, I was just going to say, we have Nettleton Triangle in West Central that is under the same conditions. And we do sometimes struggle to keep that maintained, but that's the way it's always been.
The neighborhood councils have the same issue because those that want it today age out of the council and now they're trying to get someone else new into them to do it. There, there are areas that the council has taken on to improve the, the service that we provide to them.
So Lauren, I was just a little confused. So it's the Olmstead Triangle Park, so why wouldn't it have gone through the park board?
It's not actually owned by the park. It was founded back in 1906 with the, with the park board. It was actually purchased, when the roads were redone, the land was actually purchased through Public Works funds. The Public Works actually maintains it today.
But that is a good teaser for the future when we'll be coming to the council for a more collaborative city view on how we maintain our street right-of-way. So we're all working on that bigger picture as well.
That is, that is in three weeks. We'll come back and we'll talk about the interaction between parks and Public Works as well.
Okay.
All right, perfect. Thank you, Lauren.
Thank you.
Item 14, I believe this item was briefed at the committee earlier, but Don Kinder is here if there's any additional questions for this item.
Don, I have one, just for clarification. It was about the Revive contract that you guys said you're working on. So if the Revive contract is not extended with the current contract and it expires, would it be required then to go out for another RFP?
No, so our, our intent, and I should have clarified this earlier, Council President, is to do a one-month extension with Revive as well, which is as a minor contract, and then that, their same amendment will come through in May with TSAs.
All right, that is my question. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Don. Number 15? Well, so I think 15, we're good, since we had discussion. We moved that to tonight's agenda. So then moving into the legislative agenda, these two, first two resolutions were briefed at committee, but Jacoby's here.
Yep, I'll make my plug on TV again for anybody interested in serving on a pro or con committee for either the parks levy ballot measure or the potential public safety levy ballot measure. If you feel strongly about either, be it pro or con, please reach out to me, gbyrd, gbyrd at spokanecity.org, and we'll get you signed up to volunteer to serve on one of those committees. And you would write an, a for or against statement that would appear in the county's pamphlet. Also, in these resolutions, I figured I'd highlight for the council is an explanatory statement section, and the city attorney will provide me that language as an amendment that we will also fill in prior to passage.
And also for folks, you, you may not have to write the statement on your own. If there's two or three of you, it'd be a collaborative statement, and so don't, don't fear that.
Yep, our responsibility is to appoint one to three members, but you can collaborate with whoever you want outside of that. So, great. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We have Resolution 2024-0043. I know this was briefed at committee as well, but any other further discussion? All right, we have Resolution 2024-0044. This will be briefed by Matt Boston.
So proposed $1 property tax levy is being presented to you today to enhance community safety and services while also addressing the inherited financial challenges. This tax is designed to close the structural gap that was three years in the making, ensuring a more stable fiscal foundation for future city services. Specifically, the levy will fund expansion of community policing efforts, including the addition of neighborhood resource officers, traffic patrols, and more patrol officers to improve visibility and engagement within local communities. It also provides funding for expanded police ombudsman support promoting accountability and transparency in law enforcement operations. Additionally, the tax will enable increased capital investment in the fire department, allowing for acquisition of advanced equipment and facility upgrades. The levy further aims to enhance court services, facilitating a more efficient legal process. Lastly, it will support the establishment of in-house emergency services, ensuring timely, oh, excuse me, ensuring timely and effective responses to local emergencies and not relying on county contracts. The comprehensive initiative seeks not only to strengthen the public safety and service provision, but also to rectify fiscal challenges facing the community. Happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Matt. We have Resolution 2024-0045 and Resolution 0046. Both these items will be briefed by Kyle Arlington.
Good afternoon, council members, council president. The first Resolution 0045 is a request to declare Field Instrument Controls Incorporated of Spokane a sole source provider and authorize the city to enter into a five-year value blanket for enders' house or instrumentation. It'll be from June 1st, 24 to May 31st, 29, for approximately $400,000. Do I have any questions on the first one? Okay, the second one is a request to declare KGS Northwest LLC out of Bellevue, Washington, a sole source provider, and authorize the city to enter into a value blanket order for Milliken valves and valve parts from June 1st, 24 to May 31st, 29, without public bidding. That one's approximately $500,000 for the five-year period. Do I have any questions on the valves? Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kyle. We have Ordinance C36513. This will be briefed by Lance Stoll.
Good afternoon, council. Any questions? Been up here to brief this a couple times already. I think the only clarification I might not have made before is we needed to change this year because of the way we worded the 2018 amendment. After this is voted on and passed, from now on, every three years, it should just, it should just automatically be adopted. We had to change the wording because we had the original 2018 version tied to the adoption of the state code, but not the full ICC code. So that would have hampered us if we had left it in place. So from now on, it'll just adopt each cycle normally like, like it should, like we do with the building and fire code currently, so.
Thank you, Lance. We have Ordinance C36514 that moved to hearing item number two. We have Ordinance C36515. This was previously briefed, if there's any other discussion on this one. And then we also have Ordinance C36516. This was also briefed previously, if we have any other discussion on that one. All right, so moving into first reading ordinances, we have Ordinance C36517. This will be briefed by Spencer Gardner.
Hello again. This is related to the establishment of the Transportation Commission, which was presented at Pies. I'm happy to answer any questions or give another overview, if that would be helpful.
Did any, you were drafting up some language that we had talked about. Is that in this version or not yet?
Thank you. I don't think that's in this version. We are working on a few modifications based on meetings with several of you and some feedback from the community that we've received. So we expect to have a slightly different version. Substantially, it's the same, but there are a few tweaks, and we will distribute that as soon as that's ready.
All right, and then Spencer, we have the two hearings, hearing one and hearing two, if there's any additional questions or comments on those two hearings.
Yeah, hearing one is on the interim ordinance related to the definition of public parking lot, and that's just a hearing, the interim ordinance was adopted. So there's not any council action anticipated. The second item, hearing two, we can have, you want to come up, Jackie, or? This is the paper cuts ordinances that we've been, we've been working with. So I don't know if anyone has any remaining questions about them. We briefed it, briefed it several times.
All right, thank you, Spencer. All right, that concludes the advanced agenda for April 29th.
Can I get a move, can I get a move, can I get a motion?
So moved.
To move in the second to approve the advanced agenda for April 29th, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any notes, abstentions? That is approved. We are in recess until 6:00 PM.